Recording in progress, hold on.
Oh, okay. All right. So this is a meeting of the bylaws and ordinances committee of the town council. It's eight thirty. We have Rita Batino, Rhea Naughton, Mark Jimsky. And who are the other members Hillary, Armand, and Kim Norton. And we have other members of town council. Who thankfully are joining us. To make sure we don't screw up. So what I've circulated is we've had two meetings basically about. A possible ordinances ordinance to set up an affordable housing committee. So that's the one we'll start with. I've taken into account. Most of the comments that were made at the last. Committee meeting. And so in the memorandum piece on the front, I've listed the. Many of the changes and some comments. What I'm going to do is I'm going to you may want to do the same thing is just separate this and hold them side by side. Up to you. Because the second page is the actual draft. I'll quick quickly walk through the draft. Just so everybody's. Warmed up and. Refresh your recollection. So there's a section on. Establishing the the committee and the identifying the members and the terms. And there's one on organization which is new. There was a suggestion that we specify, I think it was from Kim. How how a chairman and a secretary are elected and what their responsibilities would be. The third section is purpose and. That's been changed in ways that we'll discuss in a minute. Scenarios is dash four, public education, five. Funding and then reports that would be generated. So the. On dash one. There's a lot of discussion about. Is it really? Ideal to name the actual. Other bodies that would send members over to the committee. I don't think we have a perfect solution to that, but at least for the outset, I think Steve felt very strongly and I agree that. That we want to send a message that this is a collaborative exercise. And and it's not just a luxury, it's really important that all these people. All these bodies are represented, so. I just listed as such, what we suggested that we instead of three non. Board members that we had five other town residents who did not serve on the bodies. That takes us to nine and then sex section B or subsection B talks about what that would do to staggering. The terms. And then on C, we had some discussion about the. The concepts of ex officio, I thought the best way to handle that was just to reach into other. How it's handled with other committees, so basically picked up that language from other committees and it says that. First selectman service ex officio member, but shall only vote in case of a tie. And should not be counted determining presence of a quorum. So. Are there any comments or suggestions on? Dash one?
Not here.
Yeah.
I my this Christina, my question is, I don't know what document you're reading off of, is it on the tablet?
I circulated it by email, I don't know about the tablet.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Yeah, it went out a couple of days ago.
Okay.
I imagine I could.
I can just dig it up.
Can somebody email it to?
Take a picture and send it to her.
Or you probably have it in email.
Yeah, I do. I see it.
Okay.
I would just like to say I like that I like the changes and I think it. Capsulates everything that we talked about in the prior meeting. I wouldn't change much at all and yeah, and you asked in in the beginning. In order to keep make this efficient to. Propose specific language to be added or deleted and I don't have anything to add.
Okay. In. Excuse me, my throat gets dry.
You need water, I have one.
I have one. So I'll just see if there are any comments on on. The second. A dash two organization. That pretty much comes from. Ordinances regarding other committees as well. Purpose. So we've modified this to. Not sound like we're. Trying to prevent. Developers in particular from. Circumventing anything. And so it's just, it's just a broader statement. Committee shall work with the housing authority, that's another change, it's just. To make clear that we're not trying to. Supplant or replace any of their responsibilities. But that will come up, working together, come up with common activities, I think in essence, to me, it would be. Providing resources. And and a deeper bench to the housing authority doesn't really change their mission at all. Shall work with housing authority, new town, new Canaan, other town bodies to increase the number of affordable housing units. In a Canaan and to maintain local control and planning and zoning functions. One of the questions that came out is a good question. Should we define what we mean by affordable housing and here's why I haven't done that. Much of this. Document is or proposed ordinance is focused on eight thirty G, eight thirty G has a definition, we don't, it really accomplishes nothing to reflect it in here. But but one reason I don't want to is that I don't want to tell the commission. The committee that it has to exclusively focus on eight thirty G. I think it should be their overwhelming. Purpose, but I don't want to. Bar them from going beyond that. So that's why I haven't defined that term. Achieve the purposes. The committee should recommend a plan to maintain successive moratoria. Under subsection L of section. Eight thirty G of Connecticut general statutes.
Tom, if I may, would it help to add and or substitute statutes because? There could inevitably be that eight thirty G is. Replaced by a different statute, but still within the same context of affordable housing.
I don't think that's necessary.
Well, I do, I'll tell you why, because they're doing a whole lot of work on it.
No, that's not what I mean, I. I mean, generally. The way these laws are written, it assumes. That a reference to this will also encompass any successor. Changes to that statute. But it's not a major point. I mean, if you want to put that in, the language is easy enough.
If it's even if it's redundant, it clarifies that the commission or the committee will not be disbanded should the section of the statutes change. It's just very specific.
So I guess it would say. Eight thirty G of Connecticut general statutes.
And or substitute statute.
Any success.
I'll do it right after the eight thirty G.
I know, but my my question. Are we talking about? Substitute, you know.
Whatever you want to call it, substitute or replacement or.
Subsequent.
Yes.
Successor.
Sure.
Any successor.
There's another attorney here. Can I make a suggestion?
Please. Please help.
No, it's not substantive, it's. When I was on the town council, any proposed ordinance went to the town attorney for legal review.
Oh, it still will, this will, as soon as we're done tonight.
Yes, we they can, they can. Listen to this meeting and and make appropriate recommendations.
So for now, I'll say are any successor provision.
And maybe brackets. As like a, is this the right term?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
That sounds good, I'd just like to make a comment.
Yeah.
So I like what you did with one and two, like Mark said, my only. Comment is about leaving affordable housing so open like that. And my understanding was why we were doing this committee is to specifically try to meet the criteria of eight thirty G. So I was wondering if you could put something in there that says number of affordable housing units in New Canaan that meet the eight thirty G criteria. And then perhaps at the end of the ordinance have a miscellaneous category when these. Goals are met. The committee has the freedom to take up. Other issues in affordable housing, I just feel like it's leaving it way too open. And we're under siege right now to be to protect the town from. Development and I I just think that that's mission creep in terms of what we discussed at our last meeting, but I don't know how the people feel.
Well, I would just. Respond, but I I think it's. It's pretty obvious from this that eight thirty G is the focus. And I I would rather let the commit rather than us decide what. Other. Initiatives they may want to pursue. You know, I'd rather not preclude that, so that would be my position, but why don't we take a quick vote on that?
Kim, where where you're referencing.
Okay, so on purpose.
Yes.
Where it says A three. There's no mention of eight thirty G in in or A one, for a two, it's not in the title of the committee and then it it says purpose, it says the committee shall work so on. To increase the number of affordable housing units in New Canaan, it is just left open, so that is open to interpretation, we don't operationally define affordable housing, like when you see ordinances, it will say. You know, it will define something, so either define it. At the beginning of the ordinance or at least put in there. Why we're doing this and then if you want to add. More freedom to the committee over time, then I think that's that's different, but affordable housing is huge. Category that's open to interpretation, I don't think it's. It's it's in our best interest to have it so. Vague.
Well, I need language.
Well, I just said affordable housing units in New Canaan that meet the meet the eight thirty G criteria, which is a moving target.
And what that would go where?
Right after. To increase the number of affordable housing units in New Canaan that meet. The eight thirty G criteria and to maintain local. Control of planning and zoning decisions.
Do you really want that specific?
Yes.
I mean, because if it's that specific, then it really is limited to eight thirty G as opposed to any other conversations that we have about.
Yeah. But we can put the brackets and say it or successor after it, just like we're doing at the end of the paragraph.
No, I don't think that's the point.
Yeah, no.
I think what Kim wants to make sure is that the committee is not authorized. To go beyond eight thirty G until we tell them otherwise.
Well, I I think it can be included. But it's not the primary purpose of the committee is all affordable housing, I understand senior housing, workforce housing, disabled housing. Are other forms of affordable housing, but is there some way to add that as not being the priority because right now we're. Trying to form this committee for very, very specific reasons and then this other stuff is important. But it's not going to help us meet a criteria like senior housing is is half, you get half the points. If you build senior housing, right towards eight thirty J.
Right.
But somehow we have to, I think, make that clear in what our priority is.
I think the second sentence of the purpose does that. I think the first sentence in that purpose paragraph is more general and then the second purpose where it says to achieve these purposes. The committee shall recommend a plan to maintain successive moratoria under eight thirty G.
That's where your specificity.
Where the specificity is and the first sentence sort of is more.
Yeah.
Is the more with the more general.
Because there are other pressures out there like transit oriented oriented development, I mean, you want to. Not limited it to just eight thirty G. Because there's other pressures out there.
And then we put any other successor statute after eight thirty G, which then is another generalized principle that we could do something else, but right now we want you to focus on the moratorium.
But I think he's, I think your point is these two sentences actually cover. The wider and the specific.
Yes, and I think that that's appropriate, but it also sets a priority for this. Committee, which is to get the moratoria under eight thirty G, which is the statute we're operating operating under now.
The other, the other way to approach this, Kim, is um. We can still amend this when it gets to the town council, so if you wanted to. Type up the actual language. You know, and and bring it to the town council, we could take it up then. I I just, I just would like to move this along.
Well, I mean, just adding that simple term. To achieve these purposes, the committee shall recommend a plan. And make it a priority to maintain successive, you know. I mean, that that sort of does both things, right, it says make a plan, but make a priority to. Just using her word of priority does put a little more emphasis on. The, I mean, everybody. Everybody knows why we're doing this, I mean, you know, and and the focus of this committee will obviously be those. But when you write something like this, it's. Ten, twenty, thirty years, so you know.
Well, and if you know already that there are other pressures out there, like T O D.
Yeah. Senior house.
Want to be out ahead of it, knowing that it exists.
So. Yeah, I have a question, so. In terms of the scope, I understand that the priority is to. Get our moratorium, so we're we're. Meeting the requirements of eight thirty G, but you just brought up a really interesting point. Would this committee ever even consider like, oh, we wouldn't have, you know, see, we wouldn't want to support senior housing because it doesn't meet the standards and it's not going to help us get our units, we wouldn't. Support it, you know, it it just it. Would that be, I mean, because I I feel like that would. It it then it becomes a total of like, we're going to obstruct this law from getting into place, but we're also not considering maybe the local needs.
Well, that's a that's a composition of this, I mean, you look at the composition of this committee going forward, I mean, those are, those are the best we've got in a room together, I mean. And to me, that's the guidance that we're giving the town, if if it's senior housing we need, or if it's affordable housing, whatever we need at that point, those folks, we've got one member of every single significant. Stakeholder committee in sitting in on these meetings.
Then it's not just about meeting that, you know what I'm saying, like, it's very.
So I don't think you're.
Want to be.
I don't think you're addressing Steve's comment, it's more the other. Comment that we should really limit it to eight thirty G and and I would agree with you that. If they do all this, a wonderful job. You know, three, four, five years from now. And they want to go on and look at. Senior housing, be my guest.
So so the answer to my question is.
And we wouldn't, we don't want to have to come back and amend it. To make it broader. When 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 the. When the need arises, so if we leave a little wiggle room in there, we don't have to go and re amend it. But that's that's not. That doesn't is not a comment on what you said about making it a priority, I think, I think. My comment on that is that it's pretty obvious that it's a priority, you read this thing from start to finish. I don't know how you could escape that point.
Yeah, so I was just thinking of. Well, that was one question I have, I do have specific language, but that's one question, I have another question, it's more of. The phrase to maintain local control of planning and zoning decisions. And how do I, how do I, how do I say this, that? Isn't that someone else's? I feel like that's a nut, that's not our, that's not this committee's.
I think it's, I think it's ninety five percent of what this.
No, but.
That's what the public wants.
But. Someone else, another body has that.
The way you do that is to build. Eight thirty G housing. That's how you do that.
I didn't think that 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 wording again, I'm not, I'm not, because I actually suggested local control less, it's not like it's not, I'm against it. I'm wondering if it's appropriate. To put in here versus what other bodies like their. Their duties are like, that's more my concern. You know what I'm saying, like. And I have different, I have a, I have different wording, but. I sent it to you, I don't want to like.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I don't want to, like, because I can sit there and reword this, but then you're listening to me and not reading it, so it's hard to. React to it, but I could try. What? So I would say, I mean, I would have said. I mean, could you say, sorry, I had it. Sorry. Everything's the same up until it says. Let's read the whole thing, the committee shall work with the board of selectmen, planning and zoning technical, the housing authority authority of the town, new Canaan and other town bodies to increase the number of affordable housing units in New Canaan. And this is how I how a friend phrased it and to provide opportunities for planning. And to help meet the need for. The 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 me, the need of our community. So that addresses whether it's senior housing and it also talks about local planning, but it's not saying we're making the decision, like maintaining local control through decision making.
So the wording is and to provide opportunities for local planning and what?
And to help meet the need. Of our citizens.
What do we say of New Canaan?
Of New Canaan, whatever. Because then that address, like, we actually are trying to meet the needs of our citizens and it's like, again, more positive, more aspirational, at the same time, we're trying to protect against what we don't want to happen.
As an ex officio member, could I make a recommendation?
Please.
Why wouldn't you say and to maintain local control of housing development?
Yeah, I I kind of, I'm not sure, provide opportunities.
That's wrong enough, okay, so it's fine, I I could see that, I was just trying to.
The the reminder of local control should be in here somewhere.
I like, I kind of like the what Kevin said, because I do think that local control of planning and zoning decision is kind of too amorphous, it's it like covers all of planning and zoning, then this this one specific. Part I like, Kevin, could you repeat what you?
It is more specific.
Local control of housing development. Because they already have, they already have control by virtue of zoning and and.
Yeah.
We can, you could even say affordable housing development.
Affording a house, that's it.
I thought about that too.
That would be more like.
Yeah.
This feel, it feels a little bit more like. Within the like the. The appropriate purview.
Affordable housing development.
Yeah.
So maintain local control of. Housing development.
Affordable.
Or or affordable housing development area, yes.
Fewer words.
Reinforce local.
Let Tom figure.
No, because then you're you're.
That's up to you, Tom.
It's the second sentence covers the affordable housing because you're you're.
Yeah, I think the word affordable is unnecessary, I like the way Kevin began.
Housing development.
That's fine.
Maintain local control of housing development.
Yep.
Yeah.
Of necessity, it sweeps in affordable.
And I think maintain is actually the correct word because we know what eight thirty G is, is that. It's an, it's it's an appeal that takes away that maintenance of local control, so it's not. I think maintain is the right word.
Like, like, we're, yeah, I I I agree with that. And then in your thoughts on and meet the needs, is that something?
I don't think we need, I don't think we need, it's just more words, it doesn't.
Well, I guess I'm saying I'm reacting to the point that was made about.
Diversity.
Yeah, would you like say, oh, well, we're only concerned about meeting the moratorium and if. If there's a need for senior housing, we're just not going to entertain it.
No, I'm going to be honest, right now, the the thing that we need this committee to do is address eight thirty G. Right now.
It is called the affordable housing committee.
I understand.
And we're not, this committee is not precluding senior housing.
I agree. So can we like?
It could still happen.
Yeah, and I think that this could spin in a million different ways to a point that nothing gets done and it needs to be tight and it needs to be specific. And it needs to be and senior housing, not all senior housing necessarily even falls under affordable either, either there's senior housing that. Could be like senior housing is a big umbrella of stuff.
I agree, and I wouldn't put senior housing in here, but yeah.
No, I know, but but I mean, I think. There is a point of being general, but right now we are facing something that's really big to this town and we need this committee to focus on it. And so I hear what you're saying, but I I really think that we need. And we can always amend it, this isn't like chiseled in stone and we can't. They can't deviate from it ever. Forevermore.
Yeah, and 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 the other sort of fact in the back of my head, I'm also just thinking that is someone who brought this up in the last meeting. And it's also, how do I appearances, right, like, so. If ever we had to be in front of or in in a court of law or or someone was. Fighting us on. Our decisions. And they looked at this. Would they use that against us in court to say that we're trying to obstruct? You know.
There's no language in here that's obstructive. At all, we don't have to put in flowery language about meeting the needs of our, like. The fact that we are. Putting a committee together. Of these minds. To meet this. To meet this is is creating affordable housing, like it's an effort, it's a huge effort to do this and the fact that we're hopefully going to put money behind it. Is is enough, it's, we're not going to get dinged then if we do all these efforts because we didn't say to meet the needs of. Our community, you know what I mean?
I I understand what Rita's saying in the sense that maintaining local control of housing development goes against eight thirty G. It doesn't, it it does.
It doesn't.
Yeah, it does, that's what eight thirty G is not local control of housing development, that's eight thirty G, so I understand.
Mutually exclusive thing.
That's a subtle.
They want you to, the state wants you to do it yourself and eight thirty G is a trigger to allow developers to go into court and appeal. A decision that denies them a permit. If you don't have a certain threshold, it's so it's a wonky statute, but it's not, they don't want control, they don't want the state to have control, they want you to as a locality to do it yourself.
I agree.
And if you don't and you don't meet the moratorium. Then you set yourself up. To have a developer come in, put in a plan, you deny it, they can go to court and that's their ticket to an appeal, so it's, it really, they. It's okay to have local control, that's what they want you to do, take local control, do it, build it yourself.
I agree.
And we're all friends here.
I agree.
Let me just say that the optics question is obviously important to all of us.
Yeah.
The horse is out of the barn, that. There's already been a report issued in March, I think.
A plan.
A plan. That that talks extensively about rolling moratoriums. And other types of affordable housing, they're not mutually exclusive, you know, you can do it all and I don't think we're embarrassed that that plan went out there. But but it it doesn't, it doesn't back away from the advantages of eight thirty G. It also talks about other kinds of of housing. So. So I would. I would hope I'll agree that. Just to add Kevin's change and.
Yeah, that's good.
I like that.
And move on, okay?
But can I go back, I I should have commented.
You want to change it again?
No, I know, A one, A one, I don't think it's necessary to say electors and residents.
You're right, it's redundant.
You have to be a resident to be an elector, but you have to be a lecturer.
Show who shall be electors of the town in a game.
That's what the others, other code.
Exactly.
Charter says, and the same thing with respect to. Five other town residents, someone can be a resident and not be an elector, so I think you want to have.
Five other electors.
Five other electors.
Good point. Remind me where this, that second reference is.
Number five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep. Yep.
Good. Moving on.
So glad to have the lawyers here. I just glanced over that and didn't even bother to think about it.
I think you may get other comments from the from the town attorney.
Well, that's fine.
Like, I I wouldn't think scenario is just necessary, but.
Well. Does anybody want to discuss that? What I guess.
That really.
Tell you where it came from, but let me. Let me find out if you have a problem with it and then I'll.
I don't have a problem with it, but it scenarios kind of falls under purpose, right? So is it just redundant?
I think they'll know what they're.
No, it's.
They'll know what they.
Let me tell you where this is coming from. Is that. Scott Hobbs, who's, I think, carried. A lot of the water in this area for years. Makes the, I think, compelling point that. Unless you sit down and actually run numbers, you're not doing anything. You have to know. You know what you're proposing, when you go out and ask, so for instance, you do a survey. And you go out and ask town residents. Do you like affordable housing, the answer is useless. You know, what what you need, I think, what what was it that Scott said, he said that. There's no such thing as a decision. In life, there are only. Trade offs.
Can can that be bought or purpose then?
Well, be more specific, what? You mean it, just you just want to strike the heading on scenarios?
Are you thinking, are you saying this guy suggests the scenarios?
No, he.
I understand what you're trying to get at, I I'm just.
You could call it guidance instead of scenario.
I don't care what the heading says.
Yeah.
What about proposals, specific proposals?
Yeah, I think, I think this committee will know what their their mission. Maybe they further.
Yeah, I don't understand the heading, but.
Tom, could you entertain changing this to mission and combining both for a. And for a. Scenarios.
Combining.
Purpose and scenario.
Combining three and four.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I can, I'm happy to make.
Yes.
Four, just a paragraph following. As part of purpose.
Yep.
Could you change it to mission, wouldn't it be? A more.
Final me.
Okay.
Are these, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Maria.
Are these? Shall or may, like? Will the committee?
It says shall.
I think it shall.
I think it shall too. There's your action item, but.
Yeah.
It gets a result. As opposed to just chat.
Yeah.
So we want them to, I'm I'm stuck on this, the doing surveys to measure public support for each scenario. Would that impact the decision?
Always.
But we're, are we gonna, are we asking them to have a hearing on each scenario, are we asking them to literally mail out a survey or do a phone survey of people or. Impacted neighbors or of each scenario, I just see this being like a.
I think getting input from the town is critical. I wouldn't go, I wouldn't formalize it. Beyond that.
Okay. Okay.
But I think we need the input. We need the town to react to specific things, not just vague concepts.
Can we say something that's not a survey? Cause that.
They're gonna react no matter what.
Agree. So could we ask, could we make it more of a, you know, that they should have like regular public meetings or something where scenarios are presented where, or where proposals are presented or something like that?
We talked about that last time is, I had, the prior draft said public meetings. People didn't like that. They said the committee meetings are the public access.
Can we say that the?
But we don't need the word survey if that's what you're.
Survey, yeah, what do you have again? I'm just curious, what you have against surveys? I, you.
Because survey to me sounds like a very formal process by which you're going out and potentially asking every resident, what do you think of this project? It seems really inefficient and you're never gonna get anywhere. Because you're gonna, it just, survey to me sounds like.
How about?
What we did over two summers ago where we.
How about we strike, how about we strike out? How about we just uh, strike? Um, should be achieved or should measure public support for each scenario and get rid of.
Public support.
Get, get rid of conduct one or more surveys.
Just having public meetings, cause not everyone can, I think it's maybe be beyond that only because not everyone can.
So we're striking the words, conduct one or more surveys. Everybody okay with that?
Just measure public support and show up to a meeting and, and that's where.
Gotcha.
That's good.
Public education, any comments?
No.
I, I think the, the pros and cons, number four, that's, that's a tough one. I don't know if that's really up to the committee. Cause that's an individual.
That's an interesting point.
Trade offs, right? It's not necessarily.
Yeah, like it depends where you live in town. It depends what, so I, I don't know if that's up to the committee. It's more just.
Yeah.
How the process goes.
Where, where, where.
And you can't take jurisdiction away from other bodies.
Right.
So let's.
Four.
Strike four altogether. Well.
The trade offs of possible locations? I don't know.
Well, why don't we just say, provide information to town residents on possible locations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just locations or types of locations for future affordable housing projects.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, get rid of the pros and cons, possible. Just say locations, cause that's what, obviously what people wanna know if that's an option.
Okay?
Yep.
I wouldn't even use the word possible.
Yeah, that's out too. So we'll strike the pros and cons of possible.
Keeping in mind that P and Z has already defined that as downtown, so.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I intended something much more specific.
Can you, can you say develop alternative locations?
What was that?
Never mind, never mind. It won't work.
Okay.
But, but Kevin, to your point.
Identify that you're saying Christina.
P and Z has, you know, has to be on town sewer and water.
Mm hmm.
Right. Was, was the intention of this, if a piece of property came up and we're trying to measure whether or not it is proper location. You know, and should the town acquire it? I mean, it, it kinda hits on all of them, right?
I think what, in order to increase the, the stock of eight thirty G affordable housing, we're gonna have to have a bunch of developments or something. And so I just wanted input on, or I, I wanted to share, have a dialogue with the public about where that might happen.
Yeah.
Um.
But isn't that cause.
And I, I don't mean this as a compliance thing, like, does it have a sewer? Does it have water? I mean, I don't think you'd wanna pick a, you'd wanna, you wouldn't wanna float a location that doesn't have sewer and water.
Right now, we understand that the planning and zoning has defined it, but at least.
I think the town attorney might have some input on this.
Fine.
But that, that, that person's on the committee, so.
Yeah.
You know, the influence is there.
Yeah, this goes to town attorney. And, and then when it comes back to town council, you can make additional suggestions, so.
But to Hillary's point, I, I, there's, there's not, we shouldn't worry about being very specific.
But. Well, and also remember, we need to notice this two weeks, so we gotta get the language back from the attorney. We need to review it one last time, post it two weeks and then we vote final. We can make changes. Minor changes to an ordinance after it's been posted, providing it doesn't change the, the significantly change the, you know, you can add those and whatever, but you can't like rewrite it basically after it's been posted. So.
Do you, oh, did you envision that even after we get word back from the?
Yeah, we need.
The lawyers, we would have another meeting?
We, we have to because that's, you know, when, this is like, you know, two weeks gotta go in the way it's gonna be uh, approved. And then we just have to go back one.
Are you trying to meet your February meeting?
For the town.
I mean, that was the idea.
Doesn't sound like it. Well, that was the idea.
Well, you can meet that, but.
Yeah, we can meet it. We can actually, we can actually do there two weeks before the meeting. It's okay. As long as the attorney comes back.
Meeting's on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
So we still have.
Okay.
We certainly have, but it requires, it requires some hustle.
Final me.
We'll talk about.
Tom, if I may, on, on number four, going back to number four, can we basically amend the sentence to say identify alternative locations for future affordable housing projects?
Where is this again?
On four.
What line?
Paragraph five, public education, number four.
Oh, four A dash five.
Yes.
Four A dash five, but.
Yes.
Word number four.
We're over that, under public education, huh? Four A.
Oh, 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 oh.
That's what you were just talking about. Yeah.
Yeah. It would read identify alternative locations for future affordable housing projects.
Why?
We need to add the word alternative.
Why do you need alternative now?
Identify alternative because you're asking them not to just find one location, but different alternative locations. The project is much wider than just the narrow one location.
Locations is plural that does that.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, but I don't have a problem with it.
I would just say identify locations, cause alternate makes it sound like separate that.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then we already have.
It could be alternative end ones we have.
We don't.
I have one in mind.
So everybody okay with adding the word identify?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Locations for and take out uh, types of locations for. So would read that identify locations for future affordable housing projects.
Period.
Well, I don't know about that.
Why?
I think it might be desirable to to float concepts of types of locations.
Or.
Example, what you mean by that types of locations, like give me example.
Well, town, town parks, I mean. Uh.
We can practice, I, I.
Will you tell me what, will you tell me, Steve, you don't like that? You, you, you know, part of the, part of the trick to this whole thing is we're all pretending that there's this magical location that we're all gonna, because we have a committee, we're gonna come up with something that everybody likes. Please.
Yeah, which is, that's where the money comes in.
Why? Yeah.
So how do we tease out, how do we have a process that teases out something even approaching a solution?
It could be land that's for sale that you build on a large scale project. It could be existing.
You could.
But I'm just thinking of types of locates, right? So it could be land that is buildable. It could be existing affordable housing that landlord owns that wants to sell it to us and we did restrict it.
And I would want the committee to be able.
Totally.
To test.
Yes.
To have the freedom to test those concepts.
So when we say identify locations, in my head, I think of land that's for sale or land that's exist that we would build on. When I think of types of locations, I think of land that's open, land that we own, houses that already exist, duplexes that already exist, sets of things. So I, I would keep in types of locations. It's like.
I like it too.
Okay. I get it. I got it.
What?
Parks and cemeteries are out.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
At least for now. So we get really desperate.
What? Libraries.
So, so, so you, everybody okay with leaving in types of locations?
Yes.
Yes. I just think it doesn't make sense with the, the affordable housing committee shall provide information to town residents on identify location, does the.
Oh.
Grammatically.
You're right.
You're right. It should be under purpose then.
I would say. More like a purpose.
It's part of the purpose.
Less like educating.
Agree.
Like we're just, this is under.
That's why I just said residents on locations or types of locations. There's no identify, just.
Out identified because we're giving.
Think we ever had that.
But I like that idea though. Well, it's up in scenarios. Each scenario shall address the type of projects involved. So the type of project could be building new, a Canaan parish, acquiring already built affordable housing. Those are types of projects, you know, biting off a little bit here and there or building something huge. That's covered in scenarios.
So we're just, then item four, we're just removing the pros and cons of possible. And we're leaving locations or types of locations.
Yeah.
For future affordable housing projects.
Yes, sir.
We're educating.
Thank you, Maria.
That was a good.
Catch. Good spot.
We, we'd catch it eventually.
Right.
Oh, don't sell yourself short. With all these lawyers. Oh.
On funding, uh, I was thinking that it should say, you know, halfway down shall assess whether the structure of that trust fund needs to be updated and whether additional funding mechanisms should be implemented. In other words.
Get rid of or.
Get rid of or and, and put an and in there.
Mm hmm. We need possible, isn't it? Affordable housing commission should identify additional funding sources. Do you need possible?
I, I don't care.
Less, less.
Does that mean if they, they need a budget for consultants? Does, cause I wanted to somehow include that. So adding and, does that?
Yeah.
Leave them open to doing that?
Yes.
Hmm.
Okay.
Well, conceivably, they could maybe use that affordable housing trust fund or some other funding source to hire a consultant if they felt like they needed it, right? Would we give them that power? Or would they have that power?
Well.
Someone would still have to approve it.
Hmm.
Yeah, it's an expenditure.
I haven't gotten to the point of how you set up a budget for this committee. I, I think that the housing and the housing uh, authority right now accesses that fund. And I wouldn't wanna tinker with that unless I really thought it through as to how this body would spend money, but typically that happens in the budget process.
Yeah.
You go for a budget. And I don't think we have to say that.
Well, here's a two-part question. Do we have anything in this ordinance that's currently written about who they report to besides the public? But what bodies this would report to? And secondly, if they don't have a budget, can they report to town council?
How do they get one?
I think four.
Can appropriate, can ask for a budget, but they could report to the housing authority also where the housing authority asked for a budget.
The housing authority cannot ask for a budget from the town government that up, that up. Clearly, this is gonna have, there, this committee to be successful is gonna need to be funded.
Mm hmm.
How they're funded. They, they have to go through the normal channels of getting funded.
The board of selectmen is the only other choice.
We have a process in place for this, so hopefully that would.
Kevin.
That would.
They wouldn't have to figure out funding, is that what you're saying?
It wasn't.
Given it to them.
It's not. It's not clear to me that we can use words in this ordinance to, to help them figure out how to get money.
Yeah, we can't rewrite the uh, the process of.
The budget process. And but it, but it, but I certainly wouldn't wanna tie their hands. I don't think there's anything that ties their hands.
Right. But Hillary raises the, the big question, you know, forget about all the personalities and all the people in, in office right now, including us. Who does this? Who is the best body for this um, committee to fall under? Who?
P and C.
Who is that? Who is that entity that ultimately they're reporting to?
Well, my concept is that they make recommendations. Period.
Period. So they're, they're not, they're not under.
Everybody, it, they make a recommendation. Here's, here's what I think the town should do. One of the things they might recommend is, um, we recommend that certain things are done with the housing authorities, certain things are done with other bodies, uh, you know, they could figure that out.
Oh, does it matter what they're, so if they see a a piece of land for sale or something, an opportunity comes to them, they would have to go to the board of selectmen and propose that, or if. So it's kind of.
We have all that in place, so it would be logical that you just follow that process. But like, when we created the audit committee, for instance, we specifically created a committee and said, we as a town council want the audit committee to directly report to the, you know, the council, because we don't have the bandwidth and in that area, and we want that feedback. We want them sort of as a, a, you know, as an offshoot of the council.
Yeah.
And it made a lot of.
That was because the audit function was part of the town council's jurisdiction out of the charter.
That's correct. So this seems like this body should be independent. And the fact that we've given it so many diverse members of these different, they, they're gonna, you have to have faith that they'll be steered correctly, because you've got board of finance on, you got town council on, you've got a housing authority member. I mean, you've got, we packed this committee with the best. So to me, you have to have a little faith that they'll do the right thing and go, you know.
That they'll know where to go.
Right.
Well, if the board of selectmen is appointed, then why do they not report to the board of selectmen?
That's the default, just go, always go to the board of selectmen. I mean, that's always the default. Start at the top, you know, and, and you take it from there. Cause the board of selectmen would be directly involved with any acquisition of property and they would be, they would be the head of the spear as far as that's concerned. So that's probably where.
It would also add weight behind any recommendation, right? And that would help.
That would add weight.
The board of selectmen, I'm just saying, if, if they reported to, if they said, okay, this is our recommendation and the board of selectmen said, okay, I agree or whatever.
It would add, it would add.
That weight going forward.
Yep. No, but that's what I meant before. You can't take jurisdiction away from a charter body and selectmen already have jurisdiction for certain things, so.
I think this is an advisory body.
I was just saying, it's an advisory to them.
To the board. You can't, you can't like write a statute.
Right.
Like planning and zoning has, it says that they're independent of somebody, you know, that, they, they have to give advice, they have to sell the advice.
Yeah.
Yep.
They have to build consensus.
I have a question for Kevin. Kevin, how does P and C manage if they don't have a budget to bring in consultants?
Town planner has the budget.
Okay, so it would go through the town planner then?
Town planner currently supports P and G.
Right.
So she's saying this body would.
Well, I, I think technically anybody could ask for funding in, in the budget process. That doesn't mean they're gonna get it. Ask for it. I think the charter says that. Any, any, I think the charter already says any committee.
Yeah.
Any, any department, any, any uh, commission, any committee can ask for funding as part of the budget process.
But it doesn't necessarily have to remain in the budget process. It could be a special appropriation.
Well, no, but only, you can't modify the charter budget process. It has to start, has to start with the selectmen and board of finance.
So even if it went through the planner, even if we said you report to the P and Z and the town planner, to the extent they needed any funding, they would come, it would have to come to you anyway.
You know, funding, funding sources is really, sources of funding to develop affordable housing. You're talking about funding to the body itself, which is.
Yeah.
An additional separate thought that you don't even have down here yet.
Right.
But again, the existing charter says, as part of the budget process, any committee can ask for funding as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Now, it's, it's possible that one of the recommendations would be to set up something like the um, land acquisition fund and have a funded entity. I, I mean, you could, you could develop that concept, but I don't, I, I'm not prepared to do it here.
Land, land acquisition budget, the statutory thing under uh.
Is it?
Under this, under Connecticut statutes.
Oh, okay.
We're executing on, so.
Okay. But anyway, I reserve, I, I mean, there, there are ways you can.
Yeah.
Shake this, but this body has to do that.
Correct. One, one question about um, organization that I was thinking about is if, if we've, we've powered up this committee with one member of each body, as we talked about. We never mentioned that one of those five other residents should be the chairman of the
Oh, do you want to do that?
Because the way the balance would work, to me, it would seem as if those four other people have enough juice as it is. There should be that one person that's at large, that's the chairman of this thing that ultimately, you know, controls the, you know, flow, if you will. Because I could see a scenario, I could see a scenario where you have a really powerful, you know, pick a, pick a board, you know, board of finance member who's on there, that's like, you know, got all, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be more balanced if we put one of those other five people on us. That's just a
That's a great suggestion. That's a good point.
Excellent.
Like that.
Really given.
So can I figure out the wording on that later?
Changing structure because the committee, the committee has to elect their own chairman.
Yeah, they do have to elect their own chairman.
Right, but that's the only We haven't done that anyplace else, but you know, just defining who the chairman must come from, so.
No, and I know, I mean, are we locking ourselves up too much there? But I don't know, I just think of the composition being more balanced if you were able to do it that way.
Well, and I also think that if one of the town bodies chairman that
It's a conflict, there's too much time. I mean, there's so many things that
And also that, that body's, you know, effectively has a little bit more power. It's not balanced anymore. I agree with you.
I agree.
Do not serve on such bodies. And one of whom shall be chairman.
That sounds good.
Well, I, I'd rather put it in dash two, but
Yeah, Tom, you'll figure it out. Yeah, it
It's just
It's an It should be there.
I would, yeah, you could put a period after first, anyway, I can send you some.
And you have to say it's voted on versus appointed and all that. Like the chairman.
Well.
Then that, that, that committee should appoint the chair, but they should appoint it, you know, from the group.
You should change the word choose to elect.
Outside the group.
Elect.
Which line?
Change the word choose to elect.
Okay. Elect.
But they have a limited pond efficient. The, the pond of the chairman would be limited to those five.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I like it.
That'll work. Thank you.
Like I say, we get more credit.
One, one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
For A seven, how often do those eight thirty J reports have?
Five years.
So, okay, right, because I, it looked like a lot of
There won't be another one coming up for another over four years, so.
Okay.
Yeah, do we just say prepare an annual report? I mean, is there gonna be, or do we?
That's a good question.
I think it helps to move forward the ultimate report so that you're documenting along the way.
That's a consistent.
Did we do that with the audit committee?
Are you saying we, we should or shouldn't have an, are you saying we should or shouldn't have an annual report?
Should.
Should.
That's what three is intended.
No, you have to preparing at least once a year a report on the committees that it doesn't, like put it in, like, they prepare an annual report.
Yeah, I would just say prepare an annual report.
Okay, that's, that's what the prior draft said, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. At least once a year, maybe.
I didn't want to be
It's like
That's a lot.
When is it?
Somebody's already recorded a annual report, like parks.
You know, he's saying at least.
Fire department, so.
Oh, that's fine. Annual report.
Annual report.
And the, you were correct, the number one is not, they're not reports, they're plans under eight thirty J.
Plans.
Well, I think it should be plans and report, because there are things that are not going into plans that need to be written down somehow.
Oh, it's, it, but I think what Kevin is saying, this is how it's referred to in the statute.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's any other reports that are made.
Right. And we certainly don't want to imply that more work than that we really need to do.
Yes.
But again, technically, you know, preparing the reports, the town has the obligation to file the plan, so they're advising on a plan and like, and has to adopt the plan, I believe. Instead, I don't think it's the town council.
So you
I'm not sure about that.
You want to use a different word than prepare?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I think the town attorney might have to invite, we have to first of all know who approves the plan. I don't recall whether the town council approved the eight thirty J plan or the board of selectmen.
Yeah, what, what this was focusing on is not so much the approvals as to
Yeah.
Who actually does, does the work? And the planning and zoning people said
Assist in the preparation.
Right.
Advising the preparation.
Well, I'll just say that Kristin Nielsen was saying, you know, this committee should, should be the one that's responsible. You know, where does the buck stop? I'm not talking about approvals, but drafting and assembly. The other part of the eight thirty G plan. I just have to get this out there. Uh, to be perfectly candid, um, that plan takes a lot of has a lot of opinions in it that, that are not backed up by, by public. By having run them by the public. I don't think any surveys, any listening went into that. You know, see what I'm saying?
Yes, it was. They had public comment, public input.
But not wide, wide.
They
It was very limited.
That, that, I think that plan to me is
Officially.
Is an aggressive statement that as a town resident, I'd say where did you get this? How did you decide this? I really don't. Whether or not they had some input, I'm not, I really have serious doubts whether that plan reflects the populace, the opinions of the populace of New Canaan. So anyway, that's, that's just an opinion. But
Can you add in there with public input, assist in the preparation of the plan with considering public input or something like that?
Yeah, I I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's anything wrong with that. I was just giving background and explaining why. You know, we've been, Kristin Nielsen requested that we, that, that we, that the committee take this on. You know, I, I'm sort of thinking something like submit. Submit for approval, I don't know. But
Not quite understand.
I take Karen, I take Kevin's point that we don't want to imply that, that the committee can do this without approval of the relevant bodies like board of selectmen. I don't want to do that. But I, but I do want to say we gotta work this thing together. Assemble a plan, I don't know what wording.
So next steps.
Propose.
Propose.
Okay.
So next steps, we gotta get this language to the attorney.
Yeah.
And have them weigh in, and then if we can, and once we get that feedback back, we can uh, I don't know whether that counts. I mean, we've all sort of looked at this, so I don't know whether everybody's okay with publishing it. Because if we published it and we brought it up at their next meeting, we can actually pass it, but um, but we could also do it the other way, where we have one more meeting, a meeting. Go through the language the attorney gave us, um, you know, you, you could either circulate it before the meeting, vote on it, or we, we discuss it at the meeting. But then we wouldn't be able to vote on it until two weeks after that. What, you know, when we
You know, part of part of it may have to do with whether we have an, another need to have a meeting.
Right.
In which case, it, it'll be fine to take this up as well. So why don't we go to the next item? Because that may actually require another meeting, I don't know. But, um, but even if we didn't have another meeting, the fact that we notice and take this up at town council doesn't mean we can't do additional amendments in that town council meeting, right?
Right.
So anyway, for now, it's a question of do we have I just like a motion that we should pass it on, this on to town council as amended. Somebody want to move that mark?
Second.
Hillary, second in all favor? Okay. No, not Robin.
God bless you for being
God. Okay, thank you. For, no, we got one more. It could, it might go quickly, or I hope it'll go quickly. I want it to go quickly. So here's some hard copy of the of the draft ordinance to require town approval of a sale of lease or transfer of town-owned property.
Christina, do you have that one?
It was in the same email, Christina.
You got it?
In the same, yes. The one that you drafted or the one I sent?
I'm talking about the one I drafted. So what I'm proposing we do please. Christina circulated an alternative draft. And I think if, if you want to pursue Christina's draft, I would suggest that we do that in a, at a separate meeting. It's getting, getting kind of late and it's pretty complicated. But what I thought we would do is just take, I'll take thirty seconds, and Christina can have five minutes or whatever. In thirty seconds, I'll explain my proposal. In five minutes, she can explain hers, and then you guys can make a decision of as whether you want to decide tonight to adopt mine, or whether you want to move this issue to a additional committee meeting. Is that fair? So, yeah, so my I can explain mine by reading the first sentence. No sale, lease, or transfer of real property owned by the town shall be valid unless approved by the town council. So that's my thirty seconds. Christina. Explain yours.
Um, what Tom just read is basically what we are doing, which is just um, allowing the, the sale to go through. We have no say in the process. It's a unilateral decision at every point, and there's no transparency. So going back to the nineteen eighty sale, I took down the notice to what steps the town council took and basically wrote them down um, as, as stated for how we should move forward. I think it basically, it gives the government body a solid ground that they're here to protect town property along with other things that we approved. And it needs to be codified in order to make sure that it doesn't deviate from what we're all expecting to be responsible for. I did not add or
Go ahead.
Or purchase, and I'm happy to do that.
What's that?
Just deals primarily with selling a real property held by the town, by the municipality.
So I would suggest that if, if the town council has the if, 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 if we're, if it's required to get town council approval, that gives us all the leverage that we need to, to, to put a process together as appropriate to a given transaction that comes up.
Yeah.
Sales of town property come up, how often? Once every five or ten years?
Never gotten.
If that. And so Christina's language is pretty, I don't, have you guys all read it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty extensive and involved. And to me, it's like, I'm not, I just don't want to go through having to decide all those things based on a theoretical transaction that we haven't seen yet. I think giving us the approval authority gives us all the leverage we need.
Well, I don't, I don't agree, because Kevin came close to selling the Vine Cottage without our approval. He made it clear that he was the CEO of the town, and he was the only one with the authority to do it, and it was also written down as an opinion by the town attorney. So I think we have to bring it back to what and how the forefathers of the town created the town charter and basically set limits on everybody's power, but no one person has the liberty or the authority to just do at will with the sale of municipal property. I'm sorry.
Christina, I have to object to what you're saying. I know, no, at no time did I ever say the board of selectmen could act to make a recommendation to have a public hearing on a sale, but at no time was, I would talk about doing anything unilateral myself, that's ludicrous. I don't know, I, I don't know how you can make
You did state that of public meetings. That we didn't have any power in
All recorded, so please, please cite the meeting that I said that. I would never have said.
No, that's correct. At the time
At the time, we didn't, and, and existing
That's why we're doing this.
Don't, all, all we have the power to do is hold a public hearing at this point, so and unless and until we pass an ordinance that explicitly says that we have to vote on the sale of of municipal property. That's the, that's the universe we're operating under, so I'm not sure what your draft ordinance accomplishes beyond what Tom's does, except that it's putting in place a lot of procedures that might not apply, and a lot of things that binds, binds us to things that we have to do, like get a, the independent real estate appraisal and, and a lot of steps that might not be necessary, where tonight we could just add sale to the existing ordinance. And keep it clean.
So when we had the parcel, the small parcel left over on Cherry Street for sale, the town did obtain an appraisal. They did agree on a price, but it was without the knowledge or the um, inclusion of town council. The only reason they came to us was because we needed to hold a public hearing, meeting. That's it. I think that's pretty bad.
This changes that.
Yeah.
This makes sure that we, that, that does have to come with, and if we, we don't have enough background information, we can request it and send it back.
Yeah, I think this accomplishes everything.
Let me give you, let me give you an example. The town players in Akina came to us, was it last week? And they wanted to change their lease. And we took care of that in twenty minutes, right? Under Christina's proposal, there would have to be competitive bidding. There would have to be all this stuff, because it's a lease that has to be approved by the town council. It's like, no. We should, we should treat each transaction appropriately, but we have the leverage to impose a process when we become aware of the transaction.
What process? What process do you feel that statement allows you to put in place?
We could put in place the process you've outlined, but we don't have to, if it's not necessary for each property. But your outline actually provides a terrific outline where it's appropriate, and we can look at it and say what Christina recommends here, here, and here makes sense for this one property as a reference point. But to codify it for every single sale, I think, might not be the best approach.
You have to understand that the, the number of properties that the town has. And I can, I'll, I'll send everybody the list, and you break it down by the board of Ed Parks. And then the use of municipal buildings and emergency buildings. Every one of them is a, is in a critical location.
Sure.
And you don't want anyone to decide and go all the way to signing a contract without us opining on it, or seeing that it was competitively bid, or that it was appraised. Because the town doesn't need to sell. If it does sell, then what use will it go to? And where's the money being?
Nobody can sign a contract before that public hearing is held, held. So I, you know, I don't know what you're right, are you referring to a signed contract?
Well, we can have the public hearing, you can sell it the next day. We have no power, and that's not the way that town council has functioned before.
Yeah, I mean, the, the language reads, no sale, comma, lease, or transfer of real property owned by the town shall be valid unless approved by the town council, period. I mean, it's like, that's, that's about as straightforward as you could possibly get. I do agree, I mean, if you think guidance, you know, somewhere in the, in the in the town council rules, we could, we could certainly put the guidance for the way, you know, we'd like that to happen. And it's one place that could live, but when you have something like this, that's so straightforward, it's, it's like the Bach Amendment, basically. It just says, this is it, boom, done. I mean, you're, you're, you're putting this, you're putting the line in the road, and you're not crossing the line unless you go through us, and that's really what you wanted to do.
Rita?
Actually
Oh, Maria?
Uh, well, I was gonna say, what, what really is missing from this is that you, the town council won't see it until it's basically at the end negotiated. The intent, it seems like there should be some notification of intent to sell that comes to the town council. Like, how, how are we aware of it before it gets to the last step that we just
Well, there would have to be an RFP that would go out, or you know, if you're selling a, a building or a piece of property, you'd have to have some sort of public notice that you're doing it.
And how do we get told about it? How does the town council?
Look at what happened with the parcel. When did we hear about it? And what documentation did we receive? Nothing.
Parcel is a, an exception to what
It's an example of the amount or lack thereof of information.
I mean, give us a concrete, like, I think we, if we had a better example, I think what, you know, give a bigger piece of property that the town owns.
That might go up for sale.
It would, it would have to be competitively bid. We wouldn't just hand it over to someone, and there's too many checks and balances on on a piece of land like that. I think this parcel is, is, it's jaded, your, your view on it.
Okay, but the Vine Cottage was put out for an RFP, and we had no say on it. And Kevin had two offers, and he was at the edge of deciding whether to sell it or not, and we had no input other than perhaps being asked to have a public hearing.
But now we saw that, now we saw that with this language.
We didn't.
Sorry.
So I love the simplicity, I really do, and I think Christina, yours might be a little too complicated. I feel like there's a middle ground here.
Okay.
I don't like the idea of, of, I, I get your point, which is, I don't want to know about this at the very end and say, okay, now you can decide, you know, where, there's been like all this work done, maybe money's butt behind it, all the stuff, work has been done, and we're not part of that process. But then, yes, at the end, we can say no. I, I just feel like there needs to be a little bit more than that. Um, so I, I think maybe Christina's too, is too much, and I think maybe this isn't enough.
But so basically, what you're implying is then the value, then you're looking at the value of the property, and you're trying to draw a line.
Actually, I'm not saying, I'm not saying specifically, because I don't, I haven't, I haven't really thought about it.
About what we own.
Yeah.
It would be very public.
It has to be. P and Z has a role, any, right? It has to be, P and Z has a role, any, right, they, they have to. Any, any, any money, any money that you'd be negotiating or any, any of that, those big numbers, that would be. Front page news if we decided that we're gonna sell a, you know, I don't use Vine Cottage, use some other, because that's, that's so, let's say we decided that.
Everything was done a certain way, what if some, I mean, and I'm not saying you would do this, but whoever is in charge, right, because we're not talking about specific people, this is supposed to be whoever's in charge.
Correct.
You could have someone who, maybe, you know, um. Uh, I, I don't have to say this, but maybe, um, took, uh, did this sort of under. Underground, or I don't know, like, got bids without doing the proper due diligence, I don't know, but I, I, I. I, I, you can't say it hasn't happened, so it may not happen, I think you have to understand that, um. Situations may arise if you don't have something in place to prevent them from happening.
This sentence does everything.
Does that, and we have.
Very end, though.
We have had, actually.
Our job isn't, is the, I think what you want is control of the executive branch, this just provides checks and balance, but I think it does.
But the executive branch has brought to us in executive session, discussions about a potential sale. Prior to a decision to do it, like the, uh, Board of Education building. Came to us in executive session, and so we were part of that decision before it was.
And I remind people, Divine Cottage, first of all, your buildings committee suggested we try to reduce the number of buildings, right? And there's a very limited number of buildings we could dispose of, they're mostly in the parks, they're mostly functional, so it's not, most of the property, you know, we have, we have right of ways. That, you know, we sold something up on Luke's Wood Road because. You know, as a part of a right of way, the pieces of property we own are insignificant, Vine Cottage had a public RFP to ask for bids. Right, the board of selectmen authorized that RFP, I didn't do anything alone, I can't do anything alone, so, you know, any. You know, the implication that this is not a public process with several steps and several bodies about, the board of selectmen is involved, P and Z is involved, and, uh.
Board of Finance.
Board of Finance.
I think having a yes, no decision on a transaction is extremely powerful. Every bidder knows from the beginning, every committee, everybody knows that it isn't going to go through until we've had a public hearing and then take a vote.
Can we vote on?
And I think you have to, I would also. You have to have a little faith in the people now and later that sit on this days, that they're gonna ask the right questions.
I would also make the argument, this is, this is the classic example of something the charter revision should do, right? The Bach Amendment, I could make the argument, was granting power to the town council that should have been done through the charter. Right, it was a code provision, people abide by it, you know, if it was a federal law, I'd say it's unconstitutional, our charter is the charter.
Right.
Until you amend it, and if something's not there that you'd like to be there, add it on charter.
And it won't make it past the law firm, right?
Again, I, I just think, I've often thought the Bach Amendment may not be valid.
Well, now it's precedent and it's got an.
It's precedent, right.
But the town's legal counsel can.
Exactly, that's where, I have no opposition to adding this simple version of adding a sale.
Right.
I never did.
So, really, we need to decide. Are we, you know, are we gonna put this off for a subsequent meeting, or are we gonna vote on this?
We should vote on this.
Are you making a motion?
I, I, it should be passed up to the, to the town council for the February meeting, along with. The affordable housing, I mean, it's.
Well, let me give you, but before you make a motion, let me explain the rest of what's in here, it just. I, I mean, the concept's pretty simple, this idea that it seems strange that you could have a hearing. You know, without the requirement of approval, so what I've done, and that, that concept of having a hearing is in state law. But we can't, we can't change state law, but we can mimic it, and so the rest, these exceptions merely mention, merely mimic. State law, so that you don't have two kinds of transactions, some of which require approval and some don't. It just, it just keeps the two parallel, so basically, when you look at them together, the same transactions are, are either required or not required to be approved. And to have a hearing by town council, so, you know, I wouldn't, I didn't really. Analyze or try to second guess sales of real property, parkland, twenty thousand, ten thousand dollars, I just copied that out of state law.
Yes.
Just so we can form the two concepts, anyway, that, so you want to make a motion, Mark?
Yes, we can have discussion after we get a second.
You have a second?
Second.
To adopt this? Maria?
Well, now, well, my discussion point is where it says approval required, could we just add notification and approval required? Like something that notifies town council, this isn't the works.
It, putting that in the heading doesn't get it done.
Well, no, but then put it in the, I think that one change would be.
But then you're gonna have to define.
I'm sorry, but.
The time, it would, it's not so simple.
Tom, why don't you just table this for the next meeting?
What's that?
Why don't you just table it for the next meeting?
Because Mark wants to act tonight, no.
We can change it in.
I suggest to get the town attorneys, I haven't talked to the town attorney, but, but this, I sent it to them next, I sent it to him, but again, I, because, I, I don't think the language you want to, shall be valid, you simply want to say no sale. Um, shall occur without the town council's approval, not be valid.
Well, the process is.
I want to get it to the, I, I think we should, it should be part of the February meeting, and I, I would move this forward, then that's my motion.
So that it goes to the lawyers.
Yeah, the language, if we, if the attorney approves.
Right.
So be it. You're not gonna sell any property on us in between, right?
And on the other hand, I don't know what a transfer is, we're not gonna give away property, so, I don't, I don't know what a transfer means, but, but let the town attorney come back on this.
Yeah.
You're not gonna give way to me to.
When I go home.
It's already, it's state, state law.
It gives her enough input.
Wait a minute, we're.
All right, do we, we, thank you.
I made a motion, so.
Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it, can I second it?
Can we, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you did second, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I, 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 I'm sorry, it says section fifty one shall not, and maybe this is me, because I don't know the terminology. But, um, section fifty one shall not apply to sales of real property.
No, you have to complete the sentence.
Except parkland, open space, or playgrounds.
Shall not apply to sales of real property if the fair market value does not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Gotta breathe past that.
Well, no, because I was like, except parkland, it's very confusing.
I didn't draft that, that's out of the state statute.
Right, you were just adopting that, okay.
Blame Hartford.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
I mean, I'd, I'd rather do this than what we're doing now.
Are you not voting?
I'm not on the committee.
He's not on the committee, okay, so we have.
I'm just here for moral support.
Hillary, note this.
Yes.
This only.
The voting.
TB, MB, who's voting yes? Raise your hand high, all right, Maria, don't.
You're on the committee, right?
Rita Batino, okay, who's voting, no, we're abstaining, Christina, what's your vote?
No.
Okay, the, the yeas have it, send it to the attorney.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Chairman.
Uh, what about, wait a minute, I thought we were just, are we, aren't we discussing the utilities commission?
Yeah, we moved.
No, it's, it's not on the agenda.
Oh.
We will, um, we will have a meeting to discuss the utilities commission.
Right.
As soon as we can get one together.
Next meeting, okay, it's nine forty eight, so we have a motion to adjourn by Moa, second?
Second.
Who seconded?
Mark did.
You want to set, you want to, while everybody's here, do you want to set a meeting?
I'd love to.
You know?
Adjourned.
To send out a doodle, doodle, doodle.
Is that rain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. I want to get it resolved.
We voted, yeah, we're out.
I, I'm also conscious that we're, that Monday, we have like five meetings, uh.